Well, welcome everybody to the final hearing for the inquiry into the use of primates and other animals for medical research in New South Wales. My name's Greg Donnelly and I'm Chair of Portfolio Committee Number Two. I would like to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians of the land on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. Today, we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders with an important perspective to share on the use of primates and other animals in medical research. I thank everyone for making the time to give their evidence to this inquiry. While we have many witnesses with us in person, some will be appearing via video conference today. So I would ask for everyone's patience through any technical difficulties that we may encounter. I might also confirm that there are two members of the committee who are joining us remotely today over the internet. If participants lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the hearing, they are asked to rejoin the hearing by using the same link as provided by the committee secretaries. Before I commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the proceeds for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it's important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unavailable, and are but rather, to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. The committee may ask you supplementary questions in writing after the hearing. Written answers to supplementary questions are to be provided within 21 days. And if witnesses wish to hand up documents, that's obviously witnesses here present today who will be joining us in the room, they should do that through the committee staff. Finally, for those participating today's hearing by video conference, can I please ask everyone to state their name before they begin speaking, to speak directly into the microphone and to mute their microphones when they are not speaking? In terms of audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak directly into the microphones. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? So with those preliminary comments out of the way, I'd like to welcome our first group of witnesses this morning for our initial session. Now, I've got a list of yourselves, there's three obviously, so thank the three of you for joining us. I'll go down that list and I'll work through that same order in terms of the swearing or the affirming of evidence, it's just the easiest way to proceed in terms of getting through the formality. So if I could commence first of all, could I welcome Mr Troy, is it pronounced Sidle?
Yes, Sidle.
Sidle, thank you, Mr Sidle. Can I invite you to identify yourself by name, I've just done that, but please repeat that, your position title, of the organisation you're representing and swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of which should be provided to you, if you don't have them, please just raise your hand and we'll provide them to you. So if you could please...
Sure. Troy Sidle, Vice President of Research and Toxicology with Human Society International. I'll read the affirmation.
Thank you.
I solemnly... Can you hear me?
Yes, I can very clearly, thank you.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And just for our clarification, you're joining us from what part of the world?
I'm in Toronto, Canada.
Toronto, Canada, welcome, welcome. We'll move to our next witness, Dr Rosemary Elliott. Can I please invite you to go through the formality, doctor?
Could I please confirm that my video is up because I've been having trouble, can you see me?
Very clearly, doctor.
Thank you very much, okay. I will take the oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, doctor. And just in terms of the confirmation of your position title, can you just identify which organisation you're representing today?
Yes, I'm representing Sentient, the Veterinary Institute for Animal Ethics and I'm a president.
Thank you very much. And Dr Van Eket, can I invite you to proceed with the formality? You could be unmute, doctor, can I invite you to...
I'm Dr Catherine Bennett and I'm Vice President of Sentient. The affirmation, I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And once again, can I welcome the three of you, your evidence, we're looking forward to, we know that you're all very busy and appreciate you carving out some time to make yourselves available today. Can I move to the invitation of... Bit of feedback here. The making of opening statements. We're just gonna, I think, can you mute one of the feeds in? Just getting a bit of correction here on the audio.
Maybe Ms Elliott, mute her microphone?
I'm muted, microphone.
How does that...
Can you not hear me?
No, we can't.
I can't hear you on and off.
No.
No, I think Ms Elliott, you need to mute your microphone, we're getting feedback through your camera.
Apologise for this, we're just getting this clarified.
You had it muted, hit mute again.
Hit mute again.
Okay.
Not muted, I can see...
Not muted, I can see...
You've got a red microphone when you...
Sorry, it's muted now.
Thank you.
No, it's not, because we can still hear you.
It's muted.
Click it again.
Click it again.
Hello?
There we are, it's her feedback.
Thank you very much and apologies for that. I'm going to invite the two organisations represented if opening statement could be made. Perhaps start with Mr Sidle, would you like to make an opening statement?
Please.
Please proceed.
Good morning. Troy Sidle, Vice President of Research and Toxicology, Human Society International. Thank you to the committee for the opportunity to provide feedback to this inquiry. I work for Animals and Science from Toronto, Canada, which sits in the traditional territory of many First Nations. While I'm not in a position to speak to the situation for animals in laboratories in New South Wales specifically, I would be happy to address the committee's questions from a work global perspective based on my nearly 30 years of experience in this field. It's been my pleasure to work alongside scientists, companies, regulators, policymakers and others for nearly three decades who share the view that a paradigm shift is needed in health research, in safety science and in education. A shift that positions human biology as the gold standard, prioritises funding and uptake of human relevant non-animal approaches. The goal of medical research is to study and develop treatments for disease in humans, not in primates or dogs or mice or other animals. The same is true for safety and efficacy assessment of new drugs, chemicals and other regulated products aside from veterinary medicines. Yet, when we look at the testing requirements enshrined in product sector regulations across the globe and where so many of our health research dollars are invested, we see a newly century old paradigm that treats humans as 70 kilogram burdens. The committee's previously heard that nearly 95% of drugs entering human trials will fail and that the major causes of this failure are lack of effectiveness and poor safety profiles that were not predicted in animal tests. How do we solve this problem? Throughout my career, I've served on a number of committees charged with the oversight of animal experiments and the promotion of the three R principle of reduction, refinement and replacement of animals in laboratories. And I've observed that these regulations often do little to advance the goal of full replacement. This is evidenced by the steady increase in animal use in many countries around the world. Policymakers, in my view, can help by establishing new systems of accountability for publicly funded health research by requiring research funding bodies to objectively assess the human relevance and the likelihood of translational success of all proposed research and to reject and defund failing animal models and ultimately to redirect this funding towards modern, human biology based approaches that have a greater likelihood of success. I'm hopeful that this inquiry can be the beginning of the shift in paradigm for humans and animals alike. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Sidle. Can I move now to the representative from Sentient? And as President, I presume, Dr Elliott, you'll be making the opening statement? Thank you. If at this point you can unmute, that would be good. That's okay, we'll do it at our end, doctor.
I've done it.
Thank you.
The nature of medical research conducted on non-human animals in New South Wales is shrouded in secrecy. What has actually done to these animals and what is their fate? How many are bred, how many die or are killed and how many are rehomed? During the first two days of public hearings for this inquiry, we've heard a lot of whitewashing phrases such as highly regulated and compliant with standards. And the vigour of the animal ethics committee process has been burnt. This shows remarkable confidence in a system that is stacked so far in favour of research that if a committee member strongly objects, they will be powerless to prevent the research being approved. Given the mandatory confidentiality clauses, nobody will be any de-wiser until one day someone questions how blatant cruelty such as forced swim tests for up to 90 minutes was ever allowed to proceed. This alarming lack of transparency extends to the crucial question of how effective is medical research using animals? The inquiry has heard evidence from researchers, chairs of various panels and animal ethics officers, animal welfare officers, who have all assured us that using animals has produced life-saving vaccines and treatments that could not have been achieved without animal testing and most likely never will be. The irony here is that we are talking about science and that this evidence has been based on opinion rather than scientific scrutiny. When medical research on animals is subjected to independent systematic reviews regarded as the gold standard in evidence-based medicine, we see a very different picture. Animal research is poorly predictive of human outcomes, unreliable and difficult to reproduce. This is due to a common pattern of methodological flaws, the effects of the laboratory environment and other variables on study outcomes, disparities between animal models of disease and human diseases and interspecies differences in genetics and physiology. These causes have not been amenable to change. This explains the logistry of research failures, including misleading safety studies even with the use of non-human primates. There is also the potential abandonment of effective therapeutics. Both are harmful to humans, as is the failure to develop more effective human-based research methods. Needless to say, the harms to research animals are profound. These animals suffer due to confined, often barren housing, the inability to express natural behaviours, exposure to noise and other stresses, regular handling and invasive procedures such as orogastric scavenging and can pay under stress from the infliction of injuries such as spinal cord damage or burns or from debilitating genetic conditions or other conditions that have been induced, often with grotesque results. The endpoint for many is premature death and the means of killing usually involves highly aversive CO2 inhalation. Laboratory animals experience is one of perpetual fear, vigilance, breathlessness, pain, nausea, hunger, discomfort, exhaustion, boredom, helplessness, frustration, terror, confusion and despair. This is hardly a life worth living.
As I'm...
It's in the public interest to know this. The false dichotomy that it's either animal welfare or human health is an ongoing theme. This must be challenged because it's silence debate about the real issue, which is that the suffering and needless death of sentient beings and the squandering of public funding to support this cannot be justified. Meanwhile, internationally, a cultural change in the scientific community is taking place. The US is set to end the FDA requirement for animal testing of new drugs. In 2021, the European Parliament voted overwhelmingly in favour of a resolution to phase out animal research in medical testing. The UK and some EU member states have national centres for the three Rs. So the matter for us to address here is how Australian researchers can make them in this movement.
Thank you very much, doctor.
Thank you very much, doctor.
If you could please...
Yes, I'm going to mute her manually.
So, doctor, we're going to mute you at this end manually to stop the feedback occurring, which is disruptive. So when it comes to you wanting to respond to a question, would you please put your hand up? Would that be agreeable to you and we will unmute you? So thank you very much and thank you for those two opening statements. We'll move now to questioning from committee members and we'll pass to the Deputy Chair, the Honourable Emma Hurst.
Thank you, thank you Chair. I'll start with Mr Sidle. You were talking a bit about this paradigm shift and I wondered, given that you're international, whether you've seen initiatives overseas that are actually working to replace the use of animals in experimentation?
Great question, thank you. There are a number of initiatives that I could point to, in the interest of time, I'll speak to, in the regulatory space, the OECD Test Guidelines Programme has developed a number of testing methods that are internationally harmonised. So all of the countries around the OECD table have agreed regarding the scientific validity, meaning the relevance and reliability for the regulatory purpose. And these guidelines are used extensively in the chemical, cosmetic, pesticide, biocide, food sectors. So we're seeing for particularly the, we'll call them the easy endpoints, skin and eye irritation, skin allergy, those are largely fully replaced now scientifically. We do still see a barrier in terms of the regulations in each of those sectors and each of the countries around the world are not necessarily up to date with the state of the art and that is, it partially answers your question in that the tools are available, the initiatives are there, there is a regulatory block. What we are also seeing in the medical research area is the other scenario where it's not a regulation that says one must use animals to study cancer, for instance, it's simply an issue of the research funding. There are a number of substantial funding initiatives that we've seen, for instance, in the United States, the National Institutes of Health, the Defence Advanced Product Research Agency of the Putin-Brok administration have compiled substantial money for organ ownership development to look at safety testing as well as disease modelling. And that is as simple as move the money away from what isn't working towards something that has a greater promise. So that is, and that is where the lion's share of the animals in laboratories are used, is in the research space rather than testing. So a tremendous, tremendous power, as I said, lies in the hands of research funding agencies.
Thank you, thanks for that. I just want to move quickly as well to Dr, well, to both doctors from Sentient, Dr Elliott and Dr Van Eket. You're quite critical of, well, not critical of the animal ethics committees, but really the process of it. And obviously, we've heard quite a bit of evidence in this inquiry, we've heard complaints from animal care staff who say that, you know, there's no one for them to complain to because each sort of body is actually part of the animal research institution. And we've also heard huge variabilities between animal ethics committees where some will approve forced swim tests and others have a rule not to approve any of those experiments. Can I hear a little bit more about whether you think that that animal ethics committee process is working as it should be and what recommendations you think that this committee should be putting forward to actually fix the way that the system is or isn't working?
I'll answer, this is Dr Elliott, I can't see your face. We do not think that animal ethics committees are working as well as they should. I would say that they were set up to kind of bridge the gap between the public's interest in animal welfare and the interest in research and what's actually taking place. Unfortunately, that does not appear to be stacking out as planned. Despite the categories of animal ethics committees, it is still heavily stacked in favour of animal research. Just to clarify, you've got a veterinarian, you've got a researcher, you've got a general member of the public and you've got someone who, a member of the public with a vested interest in animal welfare. I think it's fair to say that veterinarians involved in these animal ethics committees do, as we said in our submission, have a vested interest in the continuation of animal research, just by virtue of the fact that they're employed in that industry and it's just the nature of working within workplaces, you adopt a culture and you generally in support of what's going on. Although, of course, they want to see animal welfare being maintained, we've also heard evidence that there are cases where a veterinarian's advice is overruled by the interests of the leading researchers and that in itself is concerning. And then it's also a power imbalance, you just think of a member of the public and a welfare person, a layperson, as it were, up against, you know, people that can be fairly intimidating, veterinarians with a doctor in the name and researchers who can also be intimidating people, like these are powerful people, institutions. I would also offer the idea that there's probably a bit of a screening function too, that if you, let's say you do have a concern about the wellbeing of animals and you're working on these animal welfare committees and you're not finding that your voice is being adequately recognised, you're probably not going to choose to continue working there for too much longer. So it's our opinion that they're heavily stacked in favour of animal research.
Yes, you're back, Dr Elliott.
I was kind of in the meeting. Look, I heard at the beginning of what Dr Van Eket said, I agree with all of that. I think, although she hasn't said it already, the institutional animal care and ethics committees are really a form of self-regulation. So they need to somehow be removed from the actual institutes who are doing the research. I feel that there's not enough separation. And we also object to the mandatory confidentiality clauses that ethics committee members are needed. Can people hear me? I can't see...
We can hear you.
We can hear you, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you see me?
Yes.
Yes and no, but keep talking.
Okay. The mandatory confidentiality clauses are a big problem. We believe that there should be complete transparency into the public in terms of all ethics committee applications for the use of animals in medical research, all actions taken, complaints, the resolution of complaints etc. And it's just really, it just feels like a very closed shop. And, you know, we did hear evidence in the first two days of the hearings about things that were supported by animal ethics. I mean, the process itself is, I feel, difficult, although the process is similar to that of human ethics committees where you need to reach a consensus and then if not, a majority vote. I would argue that this doesn't really work with animals because when we look at the extreme treatment of animals in medical research, if one person objects to something like a forced swim test of 90 minutes, then I think it shouldn't happen, but that person could be overridden. So I'm concerned about the application of the process to the use of animals.
We'll move now to Abigail Boyd.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the hearing. I just wanted to check that my, no, it's okay, we don't have the echo, sorry, there was a bit of echoes from over there. I wanted to touch on something that came up in the first couple of days of hearings around there being a cultural problem within animal, sorry, within research institutions in relation to the use of animals in research. And how, I guess firstly, the question is, do you agree that there is a cultural problem in terms of the attitude towards the use of animals in medical research? And does it differ, in your view, in Australia or in New South Wales to other jurisdictions such as the US and Europe? If I could start with you, Mr Sidle.
Sure. I would say that there's a lot of dissonance within this space. There is, if we compare animal ethics to human research ethics, ideas like informed consent are treated as sacrosanct when we're dealing with human research and they go right out the window when we're talking about animal research. So it's not a level playing field. And despite all of the paperwork that's attached to animal ethics reviews, the simple fact that we take the three R commitments, reduce, refine and replace, within a protocol form, if someone has, you know, applied for research funding, I've constructed an experiment and I'm using a mouse or a dog or a primate as a starting point and then I get to protocol form and says, is there a replacement for this procedure? It is so, it's naive and disingenuous to, for any researcher or any ethics committee to feel that there's going to be a one-to-one, off-the-shelf replacement that someone has already created, that I will be able to substitute perfectly for the experiment that I just devised five minutes ago. And yet, that is absolutely the line of reasoning that these committees and funding agencies will go through. And it's immediately, take no replacement, so the best we can do is reduce or refine. And that, that model, that is the status quo, that is so normalised and that is one of the many issues that until we can really confront, how is, how do we do human-based research design? How do we construct? How do we phrase and articulate research testable hypotheses in a different way that do not use an animal model as step one?
Thank you. Could I ask maybe Dr Elliott for your response?
Unmute Dr Elliott. It's time muting Dr Elliott, Abigail.
Thank you.
I think she might have dropped out again, so you might want to ask Dr...
Dr Van Eket, are you up for a response while we're getting...
Yeah, it seems like she made it.
Thank you.
So is there a cultural issue? We would argue yes. It's our observation that it's probably fair to say that much of animal research is kind of existing within its own silo and often is not even translatable to human research. An example is a forced swim test, which was first developed in the 70s and a recent review paper by Dr Andrew Knight found it, was examining just how often forced swim tests were quoted in human medical papers in the study of depression. And the median number was zero, meaning that all of this research is put into forced swim tests, actually not even used in human research. So just the idea that we're kind of, that a lot of animal researchers, they're just, they're very busy people, the primary objective often is publication, getting new papers in journals, academic progress within institutions. It just makes it really hard for them to kind of look more broadly. Most of the kind of research they're doing, they don't have sufficient time to undertake thorough systematic reviews to figure out what has been done regarding their hypotheses and their research interests, how effective that research has been, and then also just how effective, in general, and how effective that has been in the ultimate goal, which is in human work. So this is, again, this is the issue with relying on animal researchers themselves to further our broad goal of developing good models for the animal world. And then I guess we're carrying on this legacy that, as Dr Seidel said, was developed a good century ago, this legacy of, at the time, at least we had those animal models, we thought, but that is no longer the case. And I have every confidence that with additional funding put into alternative models, that we'll find even better things. Yeah, does that answer your question? It does.
Thank you, doctor. We have to now move to, sorry, Abigail, to questioning. We may get a chance to return, hopefully. We'll now move to government members. Would the Honourable Wes Fang like to?
Thank you, Chair. I'll start with questions around, I guess, efficacy. And I've asked previous witnesses about the circumstances with which they might support animal testing, given they have a clear objection to it. Could I ask either Dr Elliot or Dr Van Ecker, what the, under what circumstances would you be in a position to support animal testing? And how do you measure the thresholds that would allow you to permit that?
Yeah, so we give support of animal testing where it's for the benefit of animals, which is not really relevant to this inquiry, any use of animals for medical research for human purposes. We definitely support of animal testing for medical, sorry, veterinary medical research and also in the interest of species, like observational studies, for example, help our understanding of improving the endangered species research. In terms of the inquiry, we're specifically looking at medical research for human interest, we're in support of research that works. And unfortunately, our current models using animals just have really low predictive value. So there are various platitudes I can share with you later, but anywhere from 90 to 95% on average, animal research has been performed subsequently fails at clinical trials, at human trials. That means either it turns out that they're too toxic to using humans or the drugs themselves that worked in a number of different animal species don't work in humans. And then, yeah, so that is one reason why we're opposed to the use of animal research in this purpose, because it just doesn't work well, has affordability to humans. And unfortunately, the reason for that, there are a number of reasons. There's, Dr Elliot mentioned in that opening statement, there are mental logical flaws which historically have plagued animal research. Animals living in labs suffer chronic stress as a result of the environment, as a result of the way they're handling procedures subjected to. And that stress in itself impacts every system in the body, impacts the, no regard to genetic, impacts genetic expression, impacts biochemistry, impacts pretty much every research outcome we're looking at. I've got some great examples, but the paper was examining amortic issues in mice, so they genetically engineered mice to develop amortic problems. And miraculously, those, so they were great, they had dodgy egg orders, and then as soon as they were transferred to large cages, the aortic problems had resolved. Similarly, research conducted to examine spinal disease in mice has found different responses to drugs depending on the type of flooring used in laboratory settings. So there's some really basic biological, sorry, basic animal husbandry and handling things, which are pretty impossible to control.
I accept that. However, I think we heard evidence during some previous hearings that indicated things like COVID vaccines were progressed.
Calling in, yes.
So we heard some evidence during the previous hearings that things like the COVID vaccine would have taken a number of years more to roll out if we weren't permitted to test on animals. In that circumstance, I think it'd be reasonable to say that there would be millions of human deaths which probably would have occurred in an unvaccinated population had we had to wait a number of years more. Does that circumstance not warrant testing on animals?
That's a really difficult anecdotal scenario to answer because we just don't have a comparison. With scientific research, you need a baseline to compare to, so you need a control, you need to, you need to have something that you do and then something that you don't do, so you have things to compare to. We don't have anything to compare human research to in that scenario, because, sorry, animal research in that scenario, because we, regulations require the use of animals in research. We just don't know what could have been achieved without use of animal research. Looking forward, the goal here, the goal with all research should be to find the most financially efficient, and as you mentioned, for the time aspect, the most efficient means achieving outcomes. We should be focusing on any model that's going to get us there. At least 90%, in some types of research, Alzheimer's, for example, 99.6% of all research performed does not translate in human trials. That's an awful amount of, like estimates say at least $4 billion per drug, the US billion dollars, if that is in Australian terms, to produce one new drug. So I'm with you, I'm grateful for these COVID developments, but I would like to see how much better we could have done had we had access to non-animal models. And thankfully, as we mentioned, the FDA, hopefully, assuming it passes the US Senate, passed the House of Rebs with overwhelming majority vote in favour of a phase-out of animal lives on animal models to test these kinds of vaccines, to test drugs, as is the case in Europe last year. So overwhelmingly voted in favour, the no longer relying on these animal models. There's also my understanding with the COVID vaccination that human trials had commenced prior to, sorry, human trials commenced in parallel to animal testing trials. So they had the information that they needed, they were comfortable proceeding with human trials. It's my understanding that they were having to do that in trials in parallel just for regulatory approval, not because they needed that information necessarily as human responses.
Am I out of time, Chair? I had one more question.
The answer is no, please proceed because the other question went over a little bit. Sorry.
Just in relation to the last point that you've made, given the high cost of animal testing and the high cost of developing drugs, if you're correct in that 99.6, I think it says 99.6% of testing was not.
Specifically Alzheimer's research, yeah.
Oh, okay, right. I guess the question I would ask is, why would pharmaceutical companies who we know are, I would say driven by profit, still continue to do animal testing if it is so unreliable and not indicative of results that they can use to create profit?
Yeah, I'm sure maybe Dr Seidel can augment my response given his knowledge of the natural market, my understanding is that much of pharmacological research is actually conducted overseas. But current regulatory requirements are one of the key reasons. But I'll point to in Europe, European Pharma KIA, that's pronunciation, which sets the standards for drug companies in Europe, announced that it will replace animal testing to detect fever-reducing compounds with a new non-animal test that just uses human blood in a vial, just to detect antibody response, sorry, antibody response, yes, antibody response. So there is a move away, and a big reason why they're still doing it is because of the regulations lagging behind the science.
Before we do, I just ask, I will allow you to be, you might be able to answer this last question that I've got that came out of that as well, which is, while there are, look, I think we would all like to move away from it, I don't think there's anybody that thinks, you know, it's a great thing to do this. However, we don't have a replacement for it yet. Is that generally agreed, that, you know, while the three Rs are, you know, a goal into the future, we're not there yet? Oh, no, sorry, it was directed, I'll ask Mr Seidel, yeah, to provide a response that you asked, that he might provide, but also just a response to that.
Sure, happy to. I would say it's a bit of a, again, a double standard in that there has to be a fully validated replacement approach in order to move away from something that we know scientifically has a far greater chance of failing than succeeding in relation to animal models. So while I won't presume to speak for pharmaceutical companies, there are a number of publications that I could point to where those companies acknowledge that they have a business problem and they're working on, you know, systematic reviews are the pinnacle of scientific scrutiny, but what can they use in a day-to-day basis to weed out, you know, animal models that are, that are going to lead to that 99.6% Alzheimer's kind of scenario versus something that has a greater likely of translational efficacy? I think, I don't want to dodge the question, but I think the simple reality is whether we're talking about animal or non-animal, that we don't understand the fundamental human biology that we're trying to predict in whatever system we choose, you're going to get a very high failure rate. And why don't we understand the fundamental biology? Because we're spending so much time and resources looking at mice, dogs, even primates, there are significant enough biological differences that wrong species often draw a result, and we don't know, we have no way of predicting which experiment is going to lead to the correct result and which one will not. So we have this tremendous uncertainty that needs to be managed, whichever kind of model system we use. But, you know, the simple reality is if we don't apply some validation criteria, some quality control to difficult experiments to make it to a level that playing field with non-animal, it's always going to be maybe down the road. We'll get the three Rs, but not today. And, you know, at the end of the day, are we willing to accept the 95% that we're waiting for every new drug? Or can we do better? And at what point do we decide we need to do better today?
I'm just conscious of the time, we've got only about a two-minute change over to the next panel of witnesses. So can I indicate to the witnesses that have just presented that I'm sure there's going to be some supplementary questions that we weren't able to get actually asked over what is this relatively short period of time we've had with yourselves? And hopefully, you'll be agreeable that through our secretariat, we'll be able to liaise with you over the answering of those supplementary questions, or indeed questions that have risen specifically from your evidence, which we've not been able to ask of you because of the time constraint. So on behalf of the committee, once again, thank you very much. We appreciate in the first instance the submissions, which have been received and processed and stand as evidence to the committee, they're most helpful. And for the oral evidence this morning, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll now move to our next panel of witnesses. Thank you. We'll bring forward now our next panel of witnesses.
I'll do a sound check if you like.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. It is challenging having people in person and remote, but nevertheless, we'll do our best and deal with any matters that arise if we need to do so. Now, in terms of our next set of four witnesses, and thank you very much on behalf of the committee for joining us today, we need to go through the formality of having you sworn in or affirmed with respect to your evidence, so you can give your evidence before this parliamentary committee. So I've got a list here of the four, and if we sort of go down my list, it makes it easier to sort of just move through the order. And I'll get each one of you pleased to identify yourself by name, your position title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer. If for a reason you actually don't have the words, please raise your arm and, or hand, and we'll provide it to you. Can I just note that Mrs Pickin, you've already appeared and provided evidence, and we're grateful for that to the committee already, and that oath or affirmation, whichever it was, forgive me, I don't recall, stands, so you don't need to do it again. So working through our witnesses, if I could start, please, with Mr Mason.
Good morning. Yeah, Dr David Mason, I'm the.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you, doctor.
Um, affirmation, I solemnly swear sincerely and truly declare, affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Dr Mason. Can I move now to Dr France?
My name is Malcolm France, I'm a consultant veterinarian working with the care and management of animal use in research, and I'm a board member of ASGAR. My affirmation, I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And we'll move to Ms Collins, who joins us here in the Jubilee Room here at New South Wales Parliament. Ms Collins.
My name is Kiri Collins, and I'm the President of the Australian and New Zealand Laboratory Animals Association. My affirmation, I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. And thanks for that reminder. And Ms Pickens, even though you've been formally sworn or affirmed at the last hearing, I'll get you pleased, if you don't mind, to identify yourself and your title and organisation representing.
Hello, my name is Kathy Pickin, I'm a member of the ASGAR board, and I'm also employed by CSIRO, as the Executive Manager of Social Responsibility.
Thank you very much, much appreciated. Now, we'll go through now and invite opening statements. Now, we've got the four of you before us, I'm not sure how many opening statements are proposed. We have a limited amount of time, so can I just find out, in terms of ASGAR, was it going to be just one opening statement or more than one? And if there was one, who was going to give that, could I ask?
It would be me, myself.
Could you please proceed, doctor?
Yeah, thank you very much. So ASGAR is not an ethical and ethical organization, our vision is to be the leading source of information and advice concerning the ethical and scientific use of animals in research picking. The central ASGAR brings together the various stakeholders within our community for instructive and respective disciplines of animal research, is unique. of animal research, is unique in Australia and New Zealand. There are a number of ways that currently the ANSCAR is supporting the three Rs. I might highlight just three of these.
Thank you.
Our compass training program, our current research into the public perception of the animals in research teaching, and our commitment to establishing an open and secure environment in Australia amongst others. Just a few quick highlights. Our compass training modules, which are freely available and being vetted by Professor Garan Anderson. This training platform and assessment tool, we believe meets both the requirements of the public and also provides a framework for standardisation of training and assessment of AECs. Researchers do things effective to meet. As of late June 2022, the overall using numbers is down to 5,000, with an individual overall completion rate of 71%. Our openness agreement commitment led by former editor Dr. Jonathan France is engaged in a process of establishing an Australia-led commitment for all who are involved in animal research teaching. We're open about the way in which they use animals part of their research teaching programme. The openness agreement has just been launched in New Zealand and is aligned also with the UK. We've just also finished a period of public consultation about this project. And lastly, our current research led by Dr. Rachel Ladecki, a specialist in public opinion polling, and Dr. Alexander Whittaker. ANSCAR's engaged a research team to actively review the current public perceptions of the use of animals in research teaching. We have no such similar objective research in Australia with possibly making this into a vertical study. We aim to establish a broader understanding of the general public's view. Look into their opinion about the use of animals in research teaching. This is to figure out how we can inform discussion and also support particularly in category Bs and AECs. On the ANSCAR outcomes review, we strongly support the three Rs of production replacement environment and consideration value. We continue to support the world-leading evidence-based best practice research along with the consideration of needs of any animals involved in research.
Thank you very much, doctor. Can I now invite Ms. Collins, if she would like to make an opening statement?
Thank you, yes. So my name is Kiri Collins. And for background, I am a New South Wales TAFE educated pathology technician by trade and a head of built environment and infrastructure, leading the delivery and operations of medical research-intensive environments, services and the teams that support them within the Randwick Health and Innovation Precinct. I'm also the president of the Australian and New Zealand Laboratory Animals Association, currently serving my fourth term and seventh term as a member of the ANSLR Executive Committee. ANSLR is grateful to the committee for the opportunity to participate in this inquiry and to give a meaningful voice to the laboratory animal science and welfare community that is charged with upholding high standards of health and welfare for animals. ANSLR is volunteer-led, including myself, with over 800 members covering the full spectrum of professional expertise in the care and welfare of animals. New South Wales represents over 20% of our membership coming from world-class research institutes, universities and service providers. Examples of our expertise include animal care, technical skill, veterinary support, regulatory compliance and reporting training and the management of facilities and services. ANSLR promotes high standards of health and welfare and ethical conduct for animals involved in research and teaching through the free exchange of information within our community. We support cooperation between organisations and institutions to encourage and promote the implementation of three Rs, including alternatives to animals, refinement of techniques and care strategies to improve the welfare of animals, and methodologies to reduce the numbers of animals in research whilst ensuring the integrity and reproducibility in research. ANSLR's position is that the nature, purpose and effectiveness of the animal research in New South Wales is of high quality, demonstrated by a respect for animals, research integrity and outstanding performance of New South Wales research internationally. Whilst animal-based research in New South Wales provides a whole high-quality care environment for animals, there is always room to enhance the culture of continuous improvement in our regulatory environment, our research reproducibility, provision of funding support for the three Rs research, and renewed access to state-based quality training and education for the technical community. This inquiry is a positive opportunity to work with the animal science and welfare community in establishing a safe and transparent environment for all who work in this industry to effectively communicate about our work and to attract and retain the best and the brightest minds. These best and brightest have the potential to create meaningful advancements in both research and how effectively the industry communicates with our stakeholders. But we can only achieve this if New South Wales invests in and provides world-class environment in which we are to operate. And although there are replacements for certain aspects of animal-based research, and these are used as validated methods and availability are found, the ethical and medical ramifications of not being able to judiciously use animals in research before there is a scientifically valid way to replace all animals would be significant. It is not only treatments and cures for medical conditionals that would be lost, but learning about the fundamental processes in the body that we do not yet understand. We would like to acknowledge and thank the regulatory and welfare bodies, and most importantly, the medical research community of New South Wales for approaching decisions and actions in caring for and use of animals throughout their lifetime from a place of respect, dignity and scientific rigor. And again, I would like to extend my sincerest thanks to the committee for this opportunity to speak. And ANSLR looks forward to working together to deliver the best possible outcomes for animals, medical research and the public.
Thank you very much for that opening statement. And in terms of questioning, we'll get underway. Can I just acknowledge, before we do, the submissions from the two organisations? ANSCAR's submission 234 and the Australian and New Zealand Laboratory Animals Association, your submission number 218. They provide valuable information to the inquiry, and I'm sure, along with the opening statements, will stimulate some questions, which we'd like to commence. Now, we'll share that around between the groups at the table. And we'll try and keep it as tight as we can to provide insurance that everyone gets an opportunity to ask some questions. So we'll start with the Honourable Emma Hurst.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'll thank you all for coming today. I'll start with Dr. France. I just want to ask about the ANSCAR openness agreement. Is that openness agreement at the moment entirely voluntary?
Yes, it's still in the development phase. It went out for public consultation earlier in the year, and that draft was based on the one that's been in place in the UK since 2014. It was developed and modified for the Australian environment by a working group convened by ANSCAR with quite, I think, significant representation from peak bodies, including funding bodies such as the NHMRC, Universities of Australia, the Association of Australian Medical Research Institutes. And most recently, we've been joined by Human Research Australia. So we've tried to keep the representation on the working group as broad as possible. And ultimately, you are correct. The intention is, as it was in the UK, the openness agreement would be a voluntary initiative for institutions to sign, as they wish to.
And with the UK one, has there become an issue where some facilities sort of just haven't signed on? Is that something that you think that has happened in the UK and could potentially happen here?
I actually can't answer that question, I'm afraid, as to whether... But I do know that in the UK, a very large proportion of stakeholders have signed on. Universities, private pharmaceutical companies, government bodies, medical funding bodies. It's quite diverse, in total about 120-something organisations. But I'm afraid I can't answer what proportion of those organisations in those categories has not signed on.
But there are some that haven't.
I don't, I might imagine it's possible, but I cannot say, other than what's given as the answer.
That's right. Do you think, though, that, you know, that there's a potential, if it remains voluntary? Or do you think that something like this openness agreement eventually should become something that everybody signs on to? You know, for the sake of sort of openness and transparency? There's been a lot of criticism that has come up in this inquiry about lack of openness and transparency. This seems like a step in the right direction. I'm certainly not sort of criticizing the process of it. But do you think that it's something that, at some stage, you know, each institution should be committing to?
I would like very much to say it gives the point where it's part of the culture, that an institution involved in animal research signs the openness agreement, or whatever instrument we eventually end up with. Should it be mandatory? I think that's, I think it's much better that institutions engage in something like this willingly rather than being forced to do so. So I'd probably rather not speculate too much on whether it should be compulsory. I'm encouraged by the support that these initiatives have had, not only the UK one, but in other European countries and in New Zealand. Again, in New Zealand, I think all the universities signed up. As did quite a number of other organisations involved in medical animal-based research in one form or another.
And what's sort of, I know it's still in the development stage, but what kind of information is being sort of proposed that members to sign up to would publish? If you can give us a rough idea?
We are, again, in the interest of trying to get engagement from the research community, are trying to keep that as open as possible. And what we're really asking for is nothing more than institutions are doing something to demonstrate greater openness and that year by year, they are moving to a more and more open way of operating. What we're seeing in the UK is a fair range of responses. But certainly there are organisations that are really very proactive in their commitments to the openness agreement over there and doing things like putting up videos and a lot more detail, even in open days in their organisations. And I have to give credit, there is a small number of institutions in Australia that are already and have been for quite a number of years taking those sorts of initiatives. And I think particularly, for example, of Australian Bio Resources, which is the major mouse breeding facility, that they have a very open website with photographs of the cages and the rooms that are kept in. And they have had public open days in the days before Covid. So there is quite a range. But really, your fundamental aim is to get institutions to commit to some form of greater openness. And we'd like to give them some discretion in how they respond.
Ms. Abigail Boyd.
Chair, I'm not sure if Ms. Abigail Boyd is here.
Okay, so we'll, if she's not here, we'll continue with the shelf.
Thank you, thank you for that. I might also move to Dr. Mason. You note in your submission that you'd like to see more funding for alternatives in Australia. But you note that it shouldn't just be funding for development of alternatives, but also the translation of those outcomes into mainstream research practice and upskilling of researchers and animal ethics committee members. Can you explain why funding for each of these is so important, perhaps starting with the translation of research? And then, and then talking about upskilling some of those AEC members? That was for Dr. Mason.
Dr. Mason, if you could unmute yourself.
Sorry, do you want me to shut it off?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Yes, certainly, when we're looking at this area of funding for research, and I guess that translatability and how we're being supported. I guess first and foremost, we've got to make sure that we do have a system that's, like, we're the animal ethics committees are reviewing each and individual, each and every research project on their own. And they're coming through and being assessed to actually make sure that they are meeting those three Rs, that there is an understanding from those committee members in terms of what you're applying to improve. Like, oh, it's actually not, and it's, how does she go to get it? Ensure that we're getting that best possible translatability from that research with the animals into the human research. That comes potentially. So in terms of funding and structures, I guess what we're needing to see here is a bit of understanding of what best support funding for our ensuring that AECs are actually trained and equipped and comfortable to ensure they're actually able to understand their responsibilities under the code and also to be able to ensure that they've got the resources behind them to help them enact those requirements under the code as well.
We've heard, oh, sorry, continue.
Um, sorry?
Oh, no, sorry, I interrupted you, please continue.
Certainly, so we're definitely looking, I think there is always opportunity for increased funding. There is, when it comes to looking at how we can improve the three Rs and, I guess, getting a better understanding of where animals are involved, and animal research is being conducted, and how we can look as continuously. We're looking to create a balance of objective opinion, not just to say that we should be doing one way or the other, but it's actually how we should get some understanding of where that research is going to be best. Both in how it's going to be best possible.
Thank you. We've also heard quite a bit in this inquiry, there's been sort of criticism, actually, from both sides of the fence in regards to the numbers of animals that are used in research and how that's being reported as one figure. Is part of good transparency a breakdown reporting of those numbers so that you've sort of got categories such as the number of animals in observational research compared to biomedical research, compared to agricultural research? Do you think that more detailed reporting like that would be supported? I know that that's something we've heard sort of from both sides of the fence, so I wanted to get your perspective as well.
Yeah, and from an ANSCAR perspective, that also falls into sort of part of our openness understanding in terms of trying to getting our institutions who are involved in animal research and teaching to actually provide a summary of what's involved. It is, as I said, we have, every state has got its own sort of requirements and jurisdictions. And we don't have any kind of solid and wide actually getting a true understanding of the number of animals involved in research. And there is certainly some bias that goes on with some of the reporting just due to some of the observational studies that happens and tend to really push out all of those animal numbers that are involved.
Hmm, yeah. Just going back to the AEC members, one suggestion that we've also heard throughout this inquiry is getting training particularly for category C and category D members. There was some real concern that there's a huge variability amongst animal ethics committees around their, around their sort of, I guess, understanding of, you know, some quite difficult scientific pieces. And that, you know, you might have one committee where the category C member is, is an expert in animal welfare. And then another animal ethics committee, it might be just somebody that's, you know, volunteered for wires, for example. Do you think that we should be ensuring that there is, in an ideal world, that there is some level of, of training or support for category C and category D members on animal ethics committees?
Sure answer is yes. And I guess that's part of the reason why the compass training program package was developed because of the ongoing sort of requests from AEC members to have some standardised approach to training and support to them. But the phase one of the compass training program actually addresses that completely. And its aim is to ensure that all members of the committee have been, have got the tools and resources to actually put the work functions under the code. And that all, we can close the categories Cs and categories Es.
Thank you.
The second part of that, too, there is just in, which is where our animal research project is coming in. And it's certainly to try and provide those category D members with some understanding of what is the public perception. And so they've got that as a basis for their knowledge when they're actually applying that to research.
We'll move now to government members. I'm wondering whether the Honourable Chris Rath may like to ask some questions, or I can move on to someone else?
Wes, do you?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
That's fine, sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Chris. Just shout it round. So the Honourable is staying.
Thank you. And Ms. Collins.
Please.
We, I don't know, I believe you were here when I was asking some questions earlier of the previous set of witnesses around the, the way with which they presented the correlation of results from animals to human results. And they said that in 99.6% of cases, they said, didn't correlate. Then I think when I pushed the answer, they, I think they said it was in relation to stroke medicine or...
Alzheimer's.
Alzheimer's medicine, yes.
They did mention that the first time, too.
Yeah, in, in your, in your view, is that a reasonable presentation of the facts? Do you think that that, is that selective? Do you think that that, is that selective or is that a result that translates across animal testing regimes?
I think that that has been presented as quite selective. I would, I would say that I am not the appropriate expert that would be able to give comment on whether that, the extent of that. I would probably defer to, to the ANSCAR team that are on the line to be able to comment.
I was, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask, to ask you first because I know, I did see you, you were there and I thought you might have been, you know, had an opinion, but I will ask the witnesses online if they could also perhaps provide just a little bit of guidance as to how reflective those numbers might be across all animal testing regimes.
I guess to say that there is some variation depending on the type of disease and the body system that's under investigation. I think one also has to be cautious though to understand that the connection between research and ultimately new therapies is not a straight line. It's a very tortuous route. And I think looking at translation of research in any field, whether it's medicine or anything else, is something that's very difficult, even in hindsight. And I certainly could, if the committee wished on notice, send through a very interesting article that was published some time ago now that looked at the development of a drug and traced it back through the various papers that have been published and the scientists involved. And off the top of my head, I can't remember the exact figures, but it was many hundreds of scientists and thousands of papers over the course of a century for the development of a single drug. So I think assessing the translatability of any form of research has to be done with great caution before judgements made.
Thank you. Does any of the other members perhaps have a view on this? I'm seeing some shaking of the heads, that's okay. The other aspect of the evidence that we heard this morning was that there's other means with which these, I guess this testing can occur. Now, we know that there are research facilities that are working on the replacement of animal testing by other means, whether it be an organ on a chip or some of the other, I'll say, technical increases that we've had in this space. But do you have a view as to how effective those means are? Do they present issues themselves, if you're aware? And also, if, if animal testing wasn't a reliable indicator of the effect of a drug or a regime on humans, why is it that we do it?
Could I comment, Mr. Fain?
I would love you to, thank you.
Please, Doctor, yeah.
I think looking at the utility of alternative methods, again, one has to look at the field of research in which they're being applied. A lot of the most successful alternatives have been taken up in the area of toxicology that is testing whether substances or new drugs could be poisonous. And there are technical reasons why alternatives lend themselves very readily to that type of testing because it is very repetitive and very similar protocols are followed. Looking at, given Australia, there's a lot less of that sort of research done. We don't have the huge pharmaceutical R and D companies here where they would be doing that testing, nor do we have the contract research organisations on a sort of scale that's found in the US and Europe. So unfortunately, that particular area where alternatives are readily taken up is not a big part of animal research in Australia. What we do have in Australia is a lot more basic research, and this often is giving much more complex questions and complex systems. And unfortunately, it makes it a lot more difficult to establish alternatives. That said, there are developments which are very promising and organoid to these mini 3D cell cultures is one example, where there's a lot of work starting to happen in Australia. But again, we have to be realistic about the translatability of that. It could be a long way down the track, if that answers your question.
It does. I guess the final point that I wanted to touch on before I pass to my other colleagues is we've heard in previous inquiries, not so much today, but things like the Covid vaccine that has been developed in recent times. We're told that it would potentially have taken up to two years plus more to have developed it for rollout if we hadn't used animal testing. Would that be something that you think is a reasonable timeframe that animal testing has allowed us to take or from the development? And I know obviously there's, you know, different, different variations, different companies have done different things, but given that we've had, you know, the high death rates that we have from Covid, is it fair to say, one, that it has assisted and two, we could have expected quite a number of more human deaths had we not had that animal testing regime in place?
I'm looking for a volunteer. Dr. Mason, we'll start with you.
The technology that the so-called mRNA vaccines is based on was developed using animals and was well down the track. As to whether animal testing sped up the availability of the Covid vaccines specifically, I think it's really because there was already that foundation based on animal research directed towards other vaccines that the Covid vaccine could happen so quickly. And of course, some of the speed with which that rollout occurred was also due to fast tracking, but not cutting corners, various approval processes and other things not necessarily related to technical procedures, animal or non-animal.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Mason, did you have anything you wanted to add or Mrs. Picken?
The short statement there is, I think, we have an established process where animals are involved in this development of this research today, but I think looking forward to it, it continues so you can invest within Australia to one of those alternative methods, and how we're going to continue to review, revise and refine the processes that are actually being involved. And do animals that have been involved in the future, do the number of animals that have been involved in the future, what does that look like? I think there's some exciting pathways coming forward in terms of their technology, and as part of ANSCAR, it's always to continue to dis, dialogue in this course within this scientific community in terms of what is the best opportunity to provide that research with the outcome of the people.
Thank you. Just about time, but there might be room for one more question. Did the Honourable Luamato have a question?
I've got what I, it's been asked, well, part of the question might have been asked. It's to ANSCAR, I'm not sure who is best to answer this question. First of all, thank you all for making yourselves available today. In your submission on page 2D, you mentioned about the contribution of animal science to medical research, human health over many decades has been substantial and led to many benefits and improvements regarding the health of all being of people as well as animals themselves. Could anyone elaborate a little bit more on that for me, please?
Can you guys open that up?
So, there have been many significant medical developments that have originated from animal research and indeed many improvements in care and treatment of disease in animals themselves as a result of animal research. So not all animal research that's done is just for human benefit, there is actually a lot of animal research that's done, which is about improving the wellbeing and the welfare of animals themselves.
That's fantastic.
So that statement is really just acknowledging that there are both of those sorts of pathways.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got some questions, and perhaps if I could direct my questions in the first instance to Ms. Collins. In your submission, Ms. Collins, on page number one, if I could just take it to you, to that page, in that paragraph beneath the dot points on page one, and particularly the final sentence where it says, finally, ANSLA would like to draw the committee members' attention to our expertise, knowledge and perspectives in demonstrating to New South Wales Government where improvements are needed. That's also coincides with a comment you made in your opening statement about where improvements can be made and where they're needed. Can I invite you to elucidate on that about those particular areas? And you can, I guess, list them all as an exhaustive list or draw on some of the particular ones you think deserve some underlining.
Sure, thank you. I think as a, as a general statement, the, the reference that we've made in our submission and also in my opening statement today reflects the need and the intent for the technical community to have a greater voice in these discussions about animal research in Australia. It's generally been accepted and discussed within, within the community that, that we do need to have more opportunity, such as within inquiries like this, as well as working together with various funding bodies and various agencies to provide that expertise because we are a skill set that is incredibly important and fundamental to animal research, but we do tend to have a limited opportunity to be able to give input where required. And certainly when you reflect on what the responsibilities are within, within the code for the care and use of animals in research, there are really strong responsibilities and accountabilities that sit with the technical community for us to uphold. And within that, it also means that we have a strong expertise and knowledge and also the ability to effectively communicate and engage with the, with the medical research, medical researchers more generally about advancements in refinements and methodologies to be able to improve and the number of animals, use of number of animals in research as well.
The key interface to the organisation, if I can paraphrase you, is that representing the work done by individuals in the laboratories, is that essentially the remit of the organisation?
Correct, yes, that's right, yeah, the, the technical community. So there are the, the researchers themselves that are charged with having scientifically valid experiments that have merit and that are assessed by the various animal ethics committees. And as in partnership with those researchers, the technical and welfare community then supports them in the delivery of those programmes of research. So it is the technical community who are looking after the, the day-to-day oversight and welfare of these animals in partnership with the researchers, as well as supporting them in education, training, further development that's required for the particular staff, and also, you know, make up portions of ethics committees and other forums as well to support that.
The matter of the ethics committees as entities associated with animal research has come under some scrutiny over the course of this inquiry. We've had two days already and this is the third, third day, half day. And the suggestion has been made, if not explicitly, implicitly, that these operators quite compliant bodies, the ethics committees essentially are, dare I say, pro research, pro animal research, and that's their default position. In terms of making animal, animal ethics committees more robust, do you see that there is enhanced role needed for, for the technical side of things to be better represented on the committees?
I think as a, as a standard response, I would say always. Certainly when it comes to the, the animal ethics committees, the facility managers, who I would also categorise as falling under the technical umbrella, they are consulted and engaged with and do, depending on the type of ethics committee, do have a role to play within those committees. Certainly I could, I would always be an advocate for that role expanding and, but I would acknowledge that generally we are, we are identified as subject matter experts that are consulted heavily by the animal ethics committees as well.
You may not be able to give this answer off the top, off the top, but entake it on notice if you need to, but in terms of the representation on animal ethics committee of the, the technical staff involved in animal research, is that a high percentage representation overall, as far as you're aware, in terms of animal research here in Australia on the committees or...
On the committees, I would say, I would say no. There's, there's not an explicit, unless, unless my colleagues can correct me, there's not an explicit category that caters to, to facility management or the general technical community being represented consistently across those forums. It's generally considered to be...
There is, the code does include a category, in addition to the four categories that the committee would be aware of, A, B, C and D, there is, it's a should rather than a must from memory, that there'd be representation from somebody with responsibility for the operation of the animal facilities. But I would like to very much support Ms. Collins' view that the perspective brought by facility managers and the animal care staff themselves is incredibly valuable to the point that I often describe the animal care staff and the animal technicians as the eyes and ears of the animal ethics committee, because they are the ones who are in the animal facilities five days a week, or brushed it onto weekends as well. And they know everything that happens, and I think their feedback is extremely valuable to ethics committees, and both ethics committees do take advantage of that, which is positive.
Can I ask, and thank you, Doctor, just to loosen that point of feedback to the animal ethics committees to make their performance more robust, how is that feedback done as a general, using as a general example? How has it actually got back to the committee for its consideration issues that might have arisen in the lab?
So certainly in my experience in working with, with animal ethics committees, the, the technical team actually works side by side with the researchers in the development of their applications to the ethics committees, and we're providing guidance and support to them in pulling those applications together and then also in the submission to the animal ethics committees as well. So we're engaged in that process and in that dialogue that the ethics committees are having directly with the researchers to be able to support them in, the researchers in answering the, the questions that come back from the committee and also in giving responses back to the committee if those questions are actually directed to the technical staff. More often than not, there, there are questions that do come back from, from approvals that are very standard and we do expect to see those, that are querying more so around the nature of the operations or wanting to get further information about how the facility is operating or training requirements, et cetera. And this is where the technical staff will come in and actually support that process and give that information. On a day-to-day basis, generally the, the technical staff are actually working closely with either the ethics committee as, as required depending on the various institution, or the ethics and regulatory, the compliance division within the broader organisation where the animal ethics committee sits under. And there's a direct relationship where we are meeting or conversing almost daily on the operations of our activity and also with our researchers as well. So the relationship that we have with the animal ethics committees as far as ongoing conversation and input is quite strong.
In your submission, I note on page three, the second last paragraph about the, what appears to be the withdrawal of or the stopping of, for whatever reason, the TAFE course that was the qualification for persons wanting qualifications in the area of animal technicians, fine technician work. Can you give me a history to that, or the committee a history to that? Is that something that's happened recently or...
So I, I would, I'd have to take that, that question on notice as far as the specific...
The timing of it, yeah.
I, I do believe it's been longer than five years now that the New South Wales TAFE course has no longer been running, and that, that specific course was, was discontinued mostly due to a lack of numbers in participants within the course. And we aren't seeing that widespread across Australia now that the, that the specific animal technology course, the numbers are getting less and less. And as a response to that, the various education providers are actually discontinuing this course. That means it then translates into a shortage of qualified staff within, within the workforce, within the industry, and it then is becoming heavily reliant on the various institutions to be able to, to bridge that gap and provide that training. Now, the training that we provide across, I would say, the majority of, all of the Now, the training that we provide across, I would say, the majority of all of the facilities that I've come in contact with across New South Wales have a very extensive training programme in order to access our animal facilities, and then even more so for the technical staff that work in there. It can take anywhere between six to 12 months for a technician to actually be deemed as competent to be able to conduct work independently in these facilities because the training requirements we carry, so they're of such a high requirement. So we do have now quite a significant issue within New South Wales relating to staff shortages, and the New South Wales TAFE course gave very specific training to working within a laboratory with animals designated for research. And those qualifications and those particular course requirements, we actually cannot replicate those in any other courses. We've not seen that available in university degrees or in other TAFE courses as well.
In terms of the curricula that was in the TAFE course, which has been...
Very laboratory-focused, yes.
Do you think there is a plausible argument for consideration of that particular qualification to be reinstalled?
Absolutely. I think it's, we are at the point now where it's become very clear. We did certainly as a community express our concerns about the closure of that course and the impact that it would have, and now several years on, we are now seeing evidence of that impact with the low staff numbers that we have available and also the numbers that we have available for recruitment within various positions. So yes, certainly that is an area of deep concern and of interest for the New South Wales community to have that course reinstated.
Thank you very much. Well, time has passed very quickly. I know there's going to be some supplementary questions that I'm sure committee members are going to have after the opportunity to read the hand card from the evidence provided this morning. On behalf of the committee, thank you all very much. The committee secretariat will liaise with you over the supplementary questions arise, but can I say all the evidence today, all means very nicely what was provided in your submission, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now have a break until 11:15am and return then. Okay, well, we'll get proceedings underway, and thank you, gentlemen both, for coming along today. I'll get each of you to state your name, your position, title, in terms of the organisation you're with, or if you're here in person, that, and swear either the oath or the affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of which should be before you. If it's not, we can provide it to you. Okay. So if we start with Mr Brackenrig.
That's correct, yes. Yes, my name is Edwin Philip Brackenrig. I'm the CEO of Codex Research Proprietary Limited, and I'm here representing that organisation.
Thank you.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And Professor Little, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Professor Christopher Little. I'm here representing the Colling Institute at the University of Sydney Royal Northshire Hospital. It's a joint venture partnership, and I solemnly and sincerely truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Professor. I'll invite you both now, if you wish to do so, to make an opening statement, and from that we can then move into the question from committee members. So are you comfortable with that proposal? So, Mr Brackenrig, I'll invite you to make an opening statement if you wish.
Thank you. The validity of animal research is being increasingly questioned on scientific, ethical and economic grounds. Research fails to predict human outcomes in the majority of cases. In the past, there were no reasonable alternatives, hence the justification despite high failure rates, ethical concerns and the enormous resources needed for animal experiments. Advances in technology now enable better alternatives, fewer ethical issues, faster and cheaper experiments, greatly simplified infrastructure, safer human trials and the hope of greater understanding of complex human diseases. However, the development of this sophisticated technology requires significant capital with long development cycles, in stark contrast to today's typical tech startup. The US and Europe are global leaders with substantial government funding, collaborative initiatives and relevant legislation driving change. An exemplar of success with government support was an FDA, NIH and DARPA initiative that saw a startup, Emulate Inc., spun out of a Harvard University organ on a chip project. Emulate has raised $93 million to date in VC funding. A recent pre-print confirms that their human liver on a chip can be vastly superior to animal models, correctly predicting human toxicity in 22 out of 27 small molecule compounds, all of which had previously passed pre-clinical animal studies, causing 208 patient fatalities and 10 liver transplants. A liver on a chip is predicted to be worth $3 billion annually in improved R&amp;D productivity, solely in predicting drug-induced liver injury. At Codex Research, we've been working with the University of Sydney to develop an in vitro model of vascular biology. The cardiovascular field, like many others, is plagued by promising therapies in pre-clinical studies, usually mouse experiments, that fail in clinical trials. Poor human outcomes can be attributed to rodent resistance to atherosclerosis, differences in blood flow dynamics, lifespan metabolism and immune function. The device we are developing uses pumps, sensors and smart control algorithms to replicate human physiological conditions with human cells, yielding a superior model of vascular biology. We are working towards replicating patient-specific blood flow patterns using patient-derived cells, enabling studies that are not possible with animal experiments. We make the following recommendations. First, for the New South Wales Government to institute a grant similar to the Medical Devices Fund, targeting development of alternatives to animal experimentation. animal experimentation. The global alternative testing market was worth $9 billion in 2020, predicting to reach $30 billion by 2030. Second, to fund technology development infrastructure, the recently announced Advanced Manufacturing Research Facility would be a good model for this. Third, implement appropriate policy and legislation to help overcome the inertia of researchers, publishers and grant bodies who have their reasons for sticking with traditional experimental methods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Professor Little.
Thank you. I haven't prepared anything, but I...
Please, as you see fit.
So I come today both representing the Colling Institute and personally as both a veterinarian by training and an animal-based researcher, translational researcher. And so I have used a lot of animals in my own research in terms of both discovery research, looking at disease mechanisms, but then also working with industry, pharmaceutical industry and others in terms of testing therapeutics. And while certainly there has been, as Edwin said, failures in that process, there have been many, many successes and many successes that aren't in fact published. So the current data on the success rates of animal research probably vastly underestimates its success for things where we find things that don't work and therefore don't progress through and cause harm. Animal involvement in medical research has three main purposes. It does allow us to get insight into the progression of disease, disease pathophysiology and evaluate therapeutic interventions in the complex biology that as of yet we cannot replicate in vitro. Despite the current advancements in that space, the in vitro technologies still have failures of being able to fully mimic the complex day-to-day minute-by-minute regulation that occurs in an in vivo system. I think, however, as with Edwin, that I do believe what we need to do is to be better and smarter at how we do in vivo animal research. It won't work for all diseases and there are some where perhaps we should immediately be looking for alternatives. But we can be smarter and better about understanding how predictive models are, how we improve their predictive validity and how we improve their translation. A recent meta-analysis, in fact, despite the current dogma that animal research fails, a recent meta-analysis looking at translation of animal research across medicine suggested somewhere in the vicinity, depending again on the disease, between 70 and 90% translational success. That's actually very successful. And as of yet, in vitro models don't have any proven validity. So I think there is a stepwise process that will happen. I think all of us would not want to go to animal research as the first step. But in that stepwise process of in vitro models, better in vitro models that mimic the pathophysiology and then better selected in vivo models that are predictive is currently and will remain for the foreseeable future as the ideal model for health research and medical research. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. Gentlemen, if you are agreeable, we've got committee members who'd like to now ask questions and we'll pass it around to the committee members. So you're okay with that? So we'll commence with the honourable Emma Hurst, Chief of Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you both for coming. I'd like to start with Mr. Brackenrigg. I want to talk about the funding for people who are developing alternatives. We've had a lot of discussion during this inquiry about the fact that sometimes alternatives just simply aren't available in Australia for some of that research. But I'm just wondering how much of that is because there's a lack of funding available for the development of those alternatives? And is that actually, if there is a lack of funding, is that affecting the growth of that industry to actually replace animals in research?
Our experience is that it is quite difficult to get funding to work on this sort of in vitro technology here in Australia. We have been successful. The project that we're currently running in conjunction with the University of Sydney has been funded by the IM CRC. That's the Innovative Manufacturing CRC. They aren't related to the health field at all, but because we came to them with a project where we said we were going to work on a high-tech device and try and make that high-tech device here in Australia, they agreed to fund our project. And that's allowed us to set up this collaboration with the University of Sydney. Now, this is a matched grant and we didn't get any money out of it for Codex. The money went to the lab at Sydney University. And that has been absolutely vital for the work so that we could validate our iterated prototypes as we made these prototypes. That's a very expensive process if you have to pay for it yourself. However, instead of money coming into Codex to help us develop it, we actually spent $1 million of our own money matching our half of the grant that was required to give that money to the lab to continue that research. So as you can imagine, developing this sort of technology is very expensive. It's also quite risky. We are really in early days in developing this sort of technology. We've been doing animal experiments for literally thousands of years. Some of the earliest recorded writings were about experiments that were done on animals as humans tried to learn about human biology from thousands of years ago. So the animal research ecosystem has a very long head start on what we have. There is a lot of funding that goes into experiments just as a part of that ecosystem. It's quite normal for researchers to apply for a grant, to put that application into a funding body and to include in that grant an animal study as part of their project and for the granting body to look at it, go, yes, that's what's needed, approve the grant and that gets funded. And all that money then goes through the researchers, then into the ecosystem that provides the animals and provides the infrastructure for animal research. There is very little of that at the moment in terms of sophisticated in vitro replacements for animal studies. This is significantly different from just a normal day-to-day in vitro studies where cells are put in a Petri dish. Researchers do that every day as well. But the sort of sophisticated technology that's required to raise this to the next level, where we hope to replace animal studies, that's a whole different ballgame. And there isn't a lot of funding towards that sort of work.
And do you think that if there's a lack of funding, a lack of support for the development of alternatives, that we will lose researchers and lose startups to other countries? And in that also regard, on the flip side, isn't it an important economic opportunity for New South Wales to actually start funding the development of these alternatives here in Australia?
I think it's a fantastic opportunity. As I said, it's still early days and that means that there is a ground floor opportunity. Industry and venture capitalists these days tend to lean towards investing in the typical tech startup, which is usually a software startup with short business cycles, short development cycles. And all you need to do is for someone to come up with a great idea and off they go and develop some piece of software that implements that great idea and away they go. So that's quite attractive to VCs. They can see a return on their investment potentially only a few years away. The development of this sort of technology, however, can take many years before you see the results. And venture capitalists tend to see it as high risk. In other words, they're not certain, they don't understand the technology, they don't understand much about biology, they know a lot more about software and how to write that. And so they tend to shy away from investing in this sort of industry. It may require some government pump priming to get an industry like this off the ground. But because this is early days, we are still at the ground level. And so developing a hub here in New South Wales, I think, would be an outstanding opportunity to develop a hub of high-value jobs, of very attractive research positions. It could attract researchers and high-value workers into New South Wales. And I think it would be an excellent opportunity for the New South Wales economy.
And you mentioned that, you know, you did get a small grant or a matched grant, sorry, but it wasn't from the health field. Is that because, you know, it's almost unheard of that someone would get a grant developing an alternative from the health field?
There are a few grants that we've looked at within the health field. The Medical Device Fund grant that I mentioned as an example of a good grant is one of them, but that specifically is for medical devices. Our device may one day hopefully be a medical device, but for right now, it's a research device, a research tool that we would put forward as a replacement for animal studies as an improvement on in vivo research methodology. We don't qualify for that grant. Other grants that we've looked at and applied for, we also have not been, we simply don't match the requirements of those grants.
Erica Boyd.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning to both. I'd like to start my questioning with Dr. Little. I'm just looking at your submission. There's a statement here where you say, quote, "There would be more harm and risk to public health if animal models were not used," end quote. And I think this is one of these arguments that has been perhaps given a little bit more, too much in my view, focus in this inquiry, this idea that because in the past animal research has produced results that have been really good for human mind, that therefore we have to keep sort of using it or that there is a requirement to continue using animals in research forevermore. Clearly, that's not the case. Can I just clarify your position on that? Is your position that in the current context of what is available to use as an alternative, that we need to keep using animals in research to the extent we do? Or do you envisage that we will always have to use animals in research?
I think, thank you for the question. I think first of all is to say that I actually support everything that Edwin just said. And I do think in the current context, yes, we don't have a viable alternative for the majority of diseases and health conditions we want to do research on. That the translational utility and validity isn't there at the moment for these higher-tech animal replacement technologies. Do I think that they will lead to a reduction in animal use in the future? Yes, I hope so. As a veterinarian, I hope so. And as a humanitarian, I hope so. Do I think that they are likely to replace everything? I suspect they won't. I suspect like animal models, there are some that are very useful and predictive for certain diseases and some that aren't as good for diseases. Animal models of stroke have been notoriously bad. Animal models of other diseases have been much better. So I think for some diseases, we will probably continue to need to use animals. And that may be for things that are even perhaps on the more controversial end of animal use, which is to understand and to study pain. Chronic pain is one of the major conditions in its own right and as part of other disease conditions, which affects society. And we've all heard about the opioid crisis and we have our own opioid crisis in Australia because of poor pharmaceuticals and ways to treat chronic pain. Pain is not simply a cell-based response. It's a psychosocial response that occurs in terms of how we perceive that change in nerve cell function. And that's not something that I think pain and chronic pain, we will be able to do in vitro, no matter how sophisticated our fluidics and cell culture systems are. So I suspect for some diseases, we will continue to need to use animals. I think we should do it smarter. I think I've written lots of papers on and I think we need our animal models to be better and more predictive. And I think in funding the research that I would fully support, that we fund to try for Edwin and others to improve the in vitro models and their predictability, we'll need to go alongside existing animal models to in fact show that they are at least as good or better. Because we can't throw away everything now and say, well, we won't do animal research because there are ethical issues with it. Because right now, that would be detrimental. It would stop development.
Yeah, I don't think anyone, well, maybe someone is suggesting that, but I think suggested in this inquiry. But in terms of getting us to that point where we are reducing significantly the numbers of animals that are being used in research and getting to that point where it is really only the research that definitely requires animal spill, how do we get to that point? Do you think that that is something that has to require government intervention? Or can it be something that the industry itself can encourage?
I think as researchers, we can encourage it, but we are slaves to our funding. So just as Edwin, I have to apply for all of my research funding through usually government-based but also philanthropic agencies and others. And so we are slaves to what we can get funded. And so that simple, I use that in inverted commas, comparative research that would head us in that direction to reduce animal numbers, to find out which models are better, to find out which diseases this particular model is predictive of or which phenotype or cluster of patients it's predictive of, that's difficult to get funded. That's not just difficult for Edwin to get funded from an in vitro basis, that's difficult to get funded in vivo, to say, I would like to do a study that improves predictive validity and ultimately will reduce the number of animals we use or will stop using it for this disease. Really hard to get funded. So I think government could intervene in all of that. But remembering that a lot of the funding we apply for is federal government funding anyway. So government at the moment is not intervening in that direction and I think it would be great if it did.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I have any time left, but if I do...
Seventeen seconds. Go for it.
I'm happy to provide a bit of ours.
Yeah, please, Paula Beggar.
I'm just...
I was just gonna say, I will ask Mr. Brackenrigg if he has any contribution on those questions also.
Yes, I agree that governments have a part to play, that the majority of research funding does come from the federal level, but state governments certainly have a role in applying pressure to federal governments to get on board with the idea of funding this sort of research. That it's important for industry players, if we can't sell our devices to researchers, then we can't make money and we can't continue to reinvest in increasingly developing the technology. And the only way we can sell our devices to researchers is if the researchers can get grant funding for it. So researchers don't generally have a war chest of money sitting around to spend on some cool gadget that comes along that industry introduces to them. The only way they can get money to buy an in vitro device is to write a grant application and have that grant application approved, then they have the money to buy the in vitro device. So until that happens, we can't, we don't really have a market to sell into. And I think governments certainly have a role to play in influencing granting bodies to look to make decisions to fund this type of research, but also publishers. So publishers also will only publish the papers that they like. And publishers are private enterprise who make quite nice tidy little profits out of their existing model. And their existing model is generally when a researcher submits a piece of work, the publisher will invariably look to see an animal study tying it all together at the end of the research before they're interested in publishing it. So I think government can certainly play a role in influencing that as well. I'd just like to mention that the US government is in the process, it looks very much like it will go through, of passing a thing called the FDA Modernisation Act at the moment, which removes the mandatory element of doing animal studies for drug trials. So this has passed the lower house with an enormous majority, including 176 Republicans in favour, every Democrat in favour and only 28 Republicans voting against it in the lower house. It's a bill that's sponsored by both a Republican and a Democrat. And it's currently passed the Senate Committee to put it into a package of legislation before being put to the floor on the Senate. It looks very likely that this will pass. So this will remove the mandate that requires animal studies before drugs can be put to human trials. This is in the US. The EU is passing similar legislation as well.
Moving to government members, would you like to jump in? Honorable Wes Fink.
Thanks, Chair. What we've, let me rephrase. What I've taken away from this inquiry so far is that both sides seem to be very good at selective data, i.e. will present this as supporting our case, for example, 99.6%, which was highlighted, you know, in the first session of the inquiry, first session, yes. But it was related to one aspect of testing. The other side, you know, obviously have a different view and they'll be selective about the data that they put forward. In relation to... In relation to the ability of devices to supplement testing and provide reliable, accurate data, things like liver toxicity sound to be very, very reliable. But I'm interested on the broader scale of testing. At the moment, given the whole regime that we do for testing on animals, how much technology do we have that can supplement that full regime? And how long do you think it would be before we are actually able to replace all animal testing? Is that even feasible?
You're asking me, I presume?
Oh, I'm asking, yeah. The philosophical parts is probably, you know, for both of you, but yes, I'm asking about the replacement component of it.
As I said, right now, there is growing interest in developing this technology globally, and I believe a growing market. And therefore, I believe that New South Wales should try to jump in in the early days and develop a capability that will benefit New South Wales economically and scientifically. I see this sort of technology as quite a parallel with the silicon chip technology that we've been developing over the last 50 years. I've lived through that process, and I purchased my first Apple IIe computer in the 1980s, and it was a machine that you could play around with, and it was a hobby machine, and no business would ever look at buying an Apple IIe to do anything with, because it was fun for hobbyists to play with, but its utility was quite limited. However, that industry then continued to develop, and after some, probably 10 years, businesses started to buy computers, and they found them to be enormously increasing of their productivity. And now, of course, 40 years later, we live in a world in which silicon chip devices are absolutely ubiquitous on every desk, and no one would ever consider having a job that didn't have a computer involved in some way. I believe that this in vitro technology will probably follow a similar pathway, and that if we get in at the early days, we will be part of an ecosystem that develops some technologies which today may seem like science fiction, in exactly the same way as these very commonplace laptops that I see on the desks around me would have been absolute science fiction when I bought my first desktop computer. I can't answer the question as to whether or not in vitro testing will completely replace what can be done with animal experimentation. But I am extremely confident that if we invest in building and developing this technology in exactly the same way that computers have massively increased productivity in the workplace, this in vitro technology will in time massively increase our capability in terms of medical research.
And I just want to quickly add to say that I don't see this as a combative thing. I fully agree with that. I think we should be trying to develop it, and we should be trying to, the in vitro technologies and replacement and reduction, refinement technologies for animal research, to improve that stepwise process. My goal is not to be an animal researcher. My goal in medical research is to find treatments for human, and as a veterinarian, also in the one health approach for animal conditions. And I'll use whatever means I can that are the best way for me to do that. If at the moment I think that's animal-based research, then that's what I will end up using. If for some conditions and somewhere along the line that becomes an in vitro model, I will gladly use that. Because my goal is to, the end goal is improved health. And however we can get to that, I think is what we should be aiming for. And so I think funding all of those things and developing them all, if that's a stepwise and parallel process, is what we should be aiming for. Okay, thank you.
Lou, do you have anything? Or Chris?
I have a logical answer.
Chair, thank you. I'm happy.
Thank you. Okay, well, I've got some questions that I might boil up. One of the challenges that's sort of excising, I think, some of our minds, picked up, I think, quite nicely at the bottom of the Colling's submission, bottom of page one. Going over to page two, I just read it out. It says that, in terms of the research, that in this discovery pathway, the need for animal models is critical. As the committee would appreciate, it's often unethical, arguably immoral, and potentially dangerous to conduct experiments on human subjects without initial experiments in animal models to demonstrate safety and efficacy. So it's a statement. With respect to that statement, I get the sense that, I say this respectfully, that some of those pursuing the change of moving away from animal experimentation rapidly don't seem to be turning their mind to this, that at the end of the day, if we have a starting point, that if we didn't have to have animal experimentation at all, in other words, we're starting with a blank sheet of paper, that wouldn't, in 2022, we wouldn't go there to start. But we are there at this point in time, where we are. And it is still critical to accept the proposition, I would argue, that you would not want to have a movement towards experimenting on human beings. I mean, I think that's probably an agreed statement. So how do we not move away from this understanding that we don't ever want to contemplate experimenting on human beings in any way, shape, or form? But at the same time, move at a more accelerated rate away from the animal experimentation? I mean, listen, I suppose it's the ultimate question, but the way which we can accelerate the movement away without compromising that principle. Any thoughts about our thinking around how we should address that? So I guess it's the overarching question, isn't it?
I would say that is the overarching question. I think that the starting point is to look at this sentence and change very little and say, often unethical, arguably immoral, and potentially dangerous to conduct experiments on human subjects without initial experiments using some technology that demonstrates safety and efficacy. There's no need to specify animal models in there, which is what the FDA Modernization Act is all about. It's saying, why specify that animal models have to be used to do this if we can find alternatives? Now, at the moment, the debate outside of that sentence is, do we have alternatives? And the answer is not a lot, but we have a lot of people who believe that with investment and time and government assistance, we can develop more and more alternatives so that you can put, you can just leave out the animal and just put in some technology, and more and more that won't involve animals.
So you think it will default towards that position if you removed the reference to the animals? That's.
I don't know that it would default towards that position if you took away animals. I think there is, as I said, we have been experimenting on animals for a very long time, and it's built up this whole ecosystem and a massive amount of infrastructure. I think the previous witness was someone who looked like they worked in or around animal facilities. And there are a lot of these animal facilities, there's a lot of people that work in them, there's a lot of publishers, as I said, that expect to see animal studies in the papers that are presented to them for publication. And there's a lot of granting bodies that expect to see animal studies put into the grant applications, and little expectation from any of those groups to see alternatives replacing animal studies. So just simply removing animal from this sentence and not taking any further action would probably not produce very much change, because I think there is a lot of inertia in the system where this is the way we've done it, let's just keep doing it the way that works for us at all levels, from researchers, publishers, and granting bodies. So I think it would require proactive intervention to develop an attitude that we need to proactively move away from animal models towards some technological replacement.
And again, I don't disagree with that statement at all. I think at the moment, it's about saying, at the moment, we don't have that. Ultimately, what we want is to have things that are predictive, highly predictive of therapeutic efficacy and safety in patients, human and animal patients. And at the moment, that's the animal model, experimental model system. If we can develop technologies that reduce that need, as I've said, I'm not sure it'll replace it entirely, but reduce that need, that would be, that's a desirable aim. But they would have to be validated. So all of these things, the 2,000 years plus since of animal experimentation, has not only developed an infrastructure, but has developed a knowledge base and a predictive knowledge base within that as to what is in comparative medicine useful and what is not. And you would have to develop that with the in vitro technologies. You would need to have, and there would be failures and mistakes in there of saying, this is, we know this is predictive for that, this model is not predictive, turns out that failed, and we did have patient problems, just as we have with animals. So I think, I think it is about developing methodologies, be they technologies or animal models that are better, that are predictive. I think that's desperately what we're trying to do. I think all of us want to improve health.
I've got to put that question back to you, because I suppose that's really what we're contemplating, that we, how do we move things along? I mean, this is, the remit of this particular inquiry is for the New South Wales Parliament. Obviously, we interface, we have autonomy in terms of what we do as a parliament, and then the government of the day in terms of what it's able to do in terms of lawmaking. The funding primarily, not exclusively, primarily for research in Australia, particularly in this area, is from the Commonwealth through the channels that you're aware of. I'm wondering if I could sort of ask this open-ended question to both you gentlemen, about from the point of view of the state of New South Wales, the state itself, and the parliament, the government of the day, whoever it might be. What do you think it can do to help move things along without compromising this fundamental position about not wanting to obviously contemplate experimenting on human beings?
I think very simple things that could be considered by the New South Wales government would be implementing a specific grant along the lines of the Medical Device Fund, which is an excellent grant in that it is not, doesn't require matched funding from the industry partner. It's a good amount. You can, you can be granted up to, I believe, $5 million for any given project. You can go and apply for a grant on multiple occasions, up to that limit of $5 million. So you can go and get a grant to progress your technology to the next level, and then go and get a further grant subsequently, a year later, or two years later, or whatever, and continue until you've got that money. The grant, I guess the disadvantage of the grant is that it's designed to be paid back. If the project becomes profitable, and only if the project becomes profitable, then the grant money is paid back, and then it's available to be given to someone else. So that's something the New South Wales government can do. The Advanced Manufacturing Research Facility being recently announced, it's going to set up a hub for bringing advanced manufacturing knowledge and connecting academia with industry out in Western Sydney. I've only just been recently made aware of that, and it looks to be an amazing program that the New South Wales government is putting up something along those lines, and possibly even working in collaboration with the AMRF as developing the technology. If we're going to actually develop and manufacture the technology itself here in New South Wales, you will need to do advanced manufacturing. But to validate your prototypes, it would be good to have a hub that connects bioscience and biomedical researchers with industry, as opposed to just the manufacturing researchers with industry. And that could work hand in hand with the AMRF, and that would, I think, attract a lot of attention here into New South Wales. The other, I guess, is a little bit, the other recommendation, I guess, is a little bit more airy-fairy. It would just simply be if the New South Wales government had a policy in place of trying to advance the technology because we are building this nascent industry here in New South Wales, so let's advocate for that sort of technology. And so every time we meet with the federal government, we just say to them, hey, you guys really need to consider, when you're doing research funding, you really need to consider funding more this sort of in vitro technology, rather than just sticking with animal models and just doing what we've been doing. So that would be more a sort of collaborative, but a policy. If the government has this as a policy, this is what we're going to do. We're going to develop these technologies here in New South Wales, then all the ministers of the government, opposition members that agree with the policy, and crossbenchers who agree with the policy would be out there advocating as much as they could, possibly attending scientific conferences and saying, look, we think that the New South Wales government likes the idea of researchers, publishers, and granting bodies globally getting on board with this idea of developing in vitro technologies, rather than just sticking with animal models all the time.
Professor Lethal, to yourself, any thoughts about, from a New South Wales point of view?
Look, and I agree again with that comment. I think it does need to be about, about supporting research and supporting comparative research. So that comparative, that initial step will still be comparison with the existing models and their validity. And I think the Advanced Manufacturing Facility, also the New South Wales government is investing in the medical research hub at Sydney University near RPA as well. And again, that's a biomedical research area, a hub, that again could be bringing together technologies with biological researchers and biomedical, classic biomedical researchers using existing in vitro and animal models to try and develop that. So again, having a policy where you might be driving that comparison, because the initial thing will be a comparative, you'll have to develop the technologies, and you'll need to compare that to the existing predictive models. And that will need to happen to show that they have validity. So having that policy and that infrastructure in place, I think, would be really important. And the sad truth about, about research, full-stop medical research, is we do what we can get funded. So part of it will be about trying to set aside some funding for it. It might be changing the Medical Devices Fund to have a specific category for developing in vitro technologies, rather than a widget that's going to treat such and such. So it might be having a separate category of that and putting it aside and saying, we want as a policy to use some of the existing funding that we have to develop the sort of in vitro technologies, because we believe in that. So it may not necessarily be more funding. Ideally, I would love there to be more funding, but it might be hiving off some of that to specifically support an objective of the New South Wales government.
Well, Jim, on that note, thank you both very much for coming along today. Your submissions were most helpful. They've been received by the inquiry and processed and stand as evidence to the inquiry. And on top of that, you've come today and provided oral evidence, which sits very nicely on top of that, and of course, the answers to questions we've posed to you. And I'm sure there is going to be some supplementary questions that will flow from having given your evidence, members reading the handstand, reading the handstand and wanting to follow that up. And our committee secretary. On behalf of the committee, thank you very much. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.